Dave? There you go, sir.
All right.
There you go, sir.
I'll turn it over to you.
If the red light is on, then it's on.
Right, right.
Yeah.
If we could reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been an executive session since six o'clock to discuss four tenure candidate recommendations to litigation matters and a personnel matter. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could have introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Robert Teague.
John Wallston.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Will O'Beare.
John McPhillips.
And Ewan McNay and Catherine Natto are not able to be here tonight. I think we might have some PIG students with us tonight, I think I see a couple. Your obligation is to stay here until nine o'clock or the meeting is over, whichever one comes first. When the meeting is done, if you make sure you come up, there are a couple sign out sheets up here. Make sure you sign out so that you get credit for being here. First is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the September 20th, 2023 regular board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Next, our meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. Just a reminder, we did send a message out today, but tomorrow is our annual Go Home Early Drill. So all students will be dismissed 15 minutes earlier as part of a state required drill. All staff and students do need to exit buildings and then can return after 15 minutes. And then Friday, we have a superintendent's conference day, so all our staff will be here for professional development, but students have the day off, so enjoy. And then finally, I'd like to turn it over to John, who wants to do just a quick update on the upcoming capital project proposition.
Good evening all, to our friends in the audience and our viewers from home. Just a quick presentation associated with the CAPR project proposition that's scheduled for the October 17 vote for the middle school auditorium. In the past couple of weeks, there's been a lot of community outreach by the district, specifically a postcard that was mailed on or about September 8th that sort of highlighted, at least initially, the date of the vote and some of the pertinent information associated with the project. And then mailed this week was the Bethlehem Highlights Fall Edition Newsletter. There's a whole large section that identifies the middle school auditorium project, some FAQs associated with that project, some of the key design elements, which I'll get to momentarily, as well as the financing design behind that project. You should, if you have not received that yet, you should receive it the next day or two. It's a fascinating read, not only for the auditorium project, but there's a lot of interesting material in the rest of the newsletter as well. So October 17th, which is a Tuesday coming up in about two weeks, from the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in Gym A located in the high school, will be where voters can actually vote on the middle school project proposition. For those individuals that are interested in absentee ballot, if you're looking to mail, receive that absentee ballot by mail, the application must be received by the district clerk at least seven days before the election if that ballot is to be mailed to the voter. Absentee drop offs must be received, for the application component, must be received the day before the election. And all completed ballots, whether by mail or by drop off, must be received no later than 5:00 p.m. on October 17th. In terms of eligibility for voters, a couple of points in that order. You need to be at least 18 years old, a U.S. citizen, and a resident of the Bethlehem Central School District for at least 30 days prior to the vote. Your registration associated with the upcoming general election in November does not necessarily have a bearing on the ability to vote on October 17th. Couple of key facts associated with the existing auditorium. It was originally constructed in 1932. Small renovations have occurred over the course of the years, but even with those renovations, it may, it remains sort of not the best space for instruction and the performing arts. There's inconsistent lighting in dark areas, there's minimal stage rigging and lighting. For those that have been to any lip sync presentation or performance, those seats are a little tight and uncomfortable. The building, that particular part of the building is not air conditioned, and it really does not meet the current instructional programmatic needs for the district. The estimated cost associated with the project that the district is presenting to voters is roughly $4.6 million. This is sort of a few snapshots of the existing space and why the district is pursuing a capital project. You can see that the stage areas is a little tight, especially with the risers. There's not a significant amount of room between the risers, the piano, and the actual piano bench in that first row of seating. The floor actually slopes upward. If you look at the bench, you can see that's a little bit of an angle. So this entire space is going to be redesigned to meet both the instructional programmatic goals and needs of the district. A couple of the specific scope elements that the proposition will cover. New stage and house lighting, a new sound system, state of the art control booth, new rigging, curtains and floor, new seating, which includes ADA seating as well as improved sight lines, new finishes on doors, hardwares, acoustic wall treatments, all of which will ensure to maintain the architectural integrity of that space to that 1930s era. Improved ADA access, assisted listening devices for those with hearing loss, a new ventilation system, including air conditioning for those warm spring or fall days, a renovated ticket booth, including the hardening of the vestibule entrance, and upgraded technology throughout the entire space. In terms of how the district is going to finance the $4.6 million capital project, funding is going to actually be drawn from available capital reserves. That means that no additional debt service will be issued, which will have the corresponding impact of no impact on future operational budgets or tax rates. In the most simplest terms, the district is using its savings account rather than going for a loan to finance the project. This sort of shows the status of those capital reserves as of the end of the last fiscal year. Presently, we have $14.1 million in capital reserves, or estimated to have at the end of the audit process. The project proposition calls for utilizing $1.7 million associated with the 2019 reserve, which will liquidate that capital reserve and the balance coming from the 2022 capital reserve. So even when we pull $4.6 million out of those capital reserves, there's still a healthy balance for future projects moving forward. Quick timeline in terms of how the project lined up. Back in August, the Board of Education considered a resolution authorizing the proposition. On September 1st, the district issued the required public notice, which is required by law to be 45 days in advance of the vote. October 17th will be the CAPR project vote, again in high school, in the high school in Gym A. We anticipate, if voters approve, that in November and December, the procurement process will begin, and we will go out to bid, select our recommended bidders, and present those to the Board of Education for a contract award in December of 2023. In mid-January, we anticipate construction to begin, which should allow for everything to, for the concert season and the, any performances to wrap up, and time for an actual completion date of approximately fall of 2024.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, John. If we have questions from the audience, if you could wait until we have our public comment section? Jody, did you have anything else? No, that's okay. Does anybody have any questions for Jody? Next on the agenda is the board report. First, I wanted to say thank you to Slingerlands for hosting us this evening. I also wanted to say thank you to everyone throughout the district that has been working on some of the Farm to You Fest activities this week. And I'm looking forward to making some salads at the middle school tomorrow during lunchtime. Second, the NISBA business meeting is happening on October 16th. Everybody should have gotten in their email a booklet of the resolutions that are, that are up for a vote at the business meeting. I took a look through the booklet, everything looks pretty straightforward. But if you look through it and something catches your eye and you have particularly strong feelings about it, shoot me an email before the 16th. And then lastly, I just wanted to make everybody aware that the town is having an open house about the Kenwood Avenue Traffic Calming Project. I think to report back on the feedback that they have gotten from the community, and that's on Tuesday, October 10th, at 6:00 at the Town Hall. So I thought people might be interested if they're available in attending, or there is also information on the town's website as well about some of the feedback that they've gotten. And especially since that impacts the area by the middle school. Anybody else have anything to report at this point? Next are our student reports. Do we have anybody with us tonight from the high school student senate?
Hi, my name is Maggie Aldericio. I'm an officer of senate. So right now, the main thing we're working on is we just started our Red Cross blood drive. So we're working on signups right now. We normally have a really good turnout for that, and then the actual blood drive itself is going to be next Wednesday, the 11th. The other thing we're mainly working on right now is our pep rally. So we're planning that right now, that's really to highlight our student athletes. So senate is coordinating that. And then lastly, we just started planning a flag football breast cancer fundraiser, which is going to be hopefully after fall sports. And we're hoping that's going to be a big community event, everybody can come out and watch, and then all proceeds are going to go to breast cancer research. And that's all.
Thank you. Is the blood drive open to the community?
No, it's just student signups.
Okay. And do we have anyone from middle schools? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maxine Lee. I'm in eighth grade Mohawk.
Hi, my name is Andrew. I'm in seventh grade Hudson.
Hi, I'm LA Danz, and I'm in eighth grade Patrón.
BCMS PTO Movie Night is tomorrow night at the Jericho Drive-In. Check out the BCMS PTO website for tickets and more information about the movie Haunted Mansion at BCMSPTO.org.
Salads for Kids Day is tomorrow in the BCMS cafeteria, and we would like to invite any or all of you to stop in, to enjoy the harvest from the middle school garden. Salads for Kids Day is the culmination of Farm to You Fest at BCMS.
The BCMS Middle School just had their auditions, and they would like, and they're gonna announce the cast list on October 7th. This year's musical is Shrek Jr.
Most of BCMS's clubs are up and running and so far had a great turnout, but there's still room for students who have not yet joined. We hope to get every student involved in at least one extracurricular activity.
We're excited for the construction projects that are happening at the middle school. Our library and a few of our classrooms are currently being renovated.
Our fall sports teams are doing great and participation is high as it's been before the pandemic.
We remind all in our community that the middle school will once again have the biggest costume ball in Bethlehem on Friday, October 27th. We expect almost 900 people in costume.
We wish our entire community a happy holiday this weekend. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. And then I think we have some friends from Slingerlands here to give us some information.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Baker. I'm the principal here at Slingerlands Elementary. I want to thank the Board of Education for joining us this evening for your monthly meeting. We're really excited to have you here, and we're very excited to provide a report of what's happening at Slingerlands. I'm going to let these students who've worked really hard with me to prepare their remarks. There's a lot of them, but don't worry, they're only saying a couple of things each, so. So without any further ado, we'll get started. So we're going to begin, we have kind of four categories that students are going to be sharing information about the school in. And our first category is school events and programs. So those students that are presenting on that, come on up. And this will catch your voice, so you can kind of get close to it, but you don't have to be right in front of it.
My name is Mina, and I will be presenting a small presentation on the trunk or treat. The trunk or treat will be hosted Thursday, October 26th.
Thank you. Families decorate trunks and cars with a Halloween theme. There are different types of trunks and themes. Everyone's invited. You can go with your friends, and there's candy, games, music, and lots of Halloween fun.
Hi, I'm Ragam, and I'm going to be doing a small presentation about field day. It's a fun time to do a lot of outside activities before the end of the school year. It helps kids develop good sportsmanship and good teamwork skills when we are doing competitions.
Hi, my name is Ellen, and I will be talking about buddy classes. Give the younger kids a chance to learn more with their older buddy. It helps the older kids develop teaching as well as be good role models for the younger kids. In buddy classes, you can do crafts, work on service, read together, learn new vocabulary, and most importantly, have fun.
Hi, I'm Alex, and I'm in fifth grade at Slingerlands Elementary School. Today, I'm going to talk about the new math curriculum for the whole school, Tang Math. Tang Math is a very different, is very different from our old math curriculum, I-Ready Math. I-Ready gave you the words and sentences to help you understand the problem, but Tang gives you, gives you pictures and diagrams to show you the steps of the problem. Tang Math does not have everything that teachers want to teach, so some teachers are adding in problems to the test, for example, word problems.
Hi, my name is Zachary, and I will talk about the I-Ready diagnostic. We have just finished the I-Ready Fall Diagnostic. We have them three times a year to see what level we are at in the I-Ready lessons. There's also a new K-2 phonics program called Foundations.
Hi, I'm Holly, and I'm here to talk about the Capital Bond Project. The downstairs is being renovated, including art, music, band strings lessons, small group instructions, and Mr. Kane's office are all being included downstairs. The work downstairs is supposed to be finished mid-year.
Hi, I'm Aiden, and I will talk about the Capital Bond product in a small presentation. Renovation on the area behind the stage off of the cafeteria will happen next. A new facility room and new CT office space will be renovated during the second half of the year. Teachers and students are excited about the new changes.
My name is Ryan, and I will be talking about the new pavilion being put in. There's a new pavilion being put in right next to the playground.
Hello, my name is Timmy, and I'm going to talk about the different clubs we have here at Slingerlands. First, we have the newspaper club. Its first meeting was yesterday. We have been doing this for three years. The second club is the garden club. It has had no meeting yet, and this is our second year doing it.
Hi, I'm Alex. We also have strings and band. Fourth graders can, and fifth graders can do strings and band. In addition, we also have the girls on the run. Hope you have a good day.
Great. So thank you so much to our Slingerlands fifth graders. Great job, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing us to present, and as you can see, there's a lot going on in our school, and students were so excited to share everything that's in our school, and students were so excited to share everything that's going on. So students, if you would like, go right up to Mrs. Dellenbaugh, and she has a special prize for each of you.
Just going to wait one second and give, give him a chance to head out if they, if they want to.
I told them they could stay if they wanted, but...
They have to go do a home tour. Next on our agenda tonight is our presentation. We have a presentation on our music program by Dave Norman and Andy Baker.
Thanks, Holly. Thanks to the board. Thanks to Andy for the invitation to come here and present a quick update of our elementary program. A couple of things that I'd like you to keep in mind as I do the presentation, there's not a whole lot of detail in the presentation, but the two things I would ask you to keep in mind that I'll try to bring together towards the end of the presentation are accessibility, which is really what happens at our elementary program, and continuity, which is what we hope for as our students progress through, through the secondary level and really beyond. So that's really what we're about as a music education program, and if you can kind of keep that in mind, those, those two words, accessibility and continuity, really have to do with the sustainability of our program. So just, just something to kind of keep in mind is sort of an overarching theme. Those are, of course, our district values and mission statement, and music education really goes to the heart of those values, and we try to establish it here at the elementary level. I'm not going to read each of these, these bullet points. You can read them for yourself, but really, those four points kind of encapsulate what we are trying to accomplish as a music education program, and it really relates to the whole question of academics, character, community, and wellness. We feel very strongly, and we, we recognize this anecdotally in the way our students respond, that music education is important to them, and they, they, they do it because they enjoy it, and it's probably one of the best ways a human being can learn. It engages the entire brain. I'm not going to get into all the details of how music makes the brain work and reinforces really everything that the brain does, not to mention the, the affective value and the sense of community that students get from participating in ensembles. The organization of our program, each of the students in K through five gets one general music class per week for 40 minutes. That constitutes the essential program. Then we have our ensembles, our elective groups, chorus, grades four and five, which has one rehearsal per week during the regular school day. Orchestra, which is one full rehearsal before school, and then sectional pull-out lessons during the same day as the orchestra rehearsal. And orchestra is grades four and five. Band, I need to correct this, band is only available at grade five. And if you look to the right, that little, that little square, because sometimes there's a little confusion about the difference between band and orchestra, the terms kind of get conflated sometimes. Orchestra basically is the strings, and for our purposes as a music education program, strings are violins, violas, cellos, and basses. Band is the woodwinds, clarinets, flute, saxophones at the elementary level. Our brass, which would be trumpet, French horn, trombone, baritone, and tuba, and then percussion, which is drums, mallets, and so forth. And that will help to, understanding that organization may help to understand some of the challenges that we are always trying to work out in how to provide the, particularly the instrumental instruction to the students so that they get the lesson which provides the fundamental instruction, but also the band experience or the orchestra experience, which is the reason most of us got into this business to begin with because of our experiences with, with band orchestra and chorus when we were students. We are what is sometimes referred to as a vertical teaching model, which means that, for example, I was a trombone player first. So when I went to music school, I was, for very logical reasons, going to be an instrumental major, and that seems to be the way that music education is laid out. So even though we are a K-12 instructional staff, a K-12 tenure area, music education is really divided into three areas based on the specialization of the particular teacher. That would be the vocal general music track, the string instrumental track, and the band instrumental track, and there are really quite a few differences between them, and that has a lot to do with some of the challenges that we try to work through when we're providing this instruction. Those are, that's basically revised, not, not revised till recently now. They were revised just before I last reported to the board, creating, performing, responding, and connecting. Shortly after they were revised, of course, we went into a whole different way of learning and a whole different way of delivering instruction, which forced us into some very different ways of dealing with music education. We were very fortunate as a district, thanks to your support as a board and the administration. We were able to function to the extent that we could during, during the pandemic years. We were able to deliver the instruction, sometimes delivering high school band instruction from one's dining room table was, was something of a challenge, but nonetheless, we were able to continue to pursue much of what we do in music education, which helped us sustain, and we are in a place now where we have substantially recovered, particularly at the elementary level. And when I show you some numbers, that may, that may help to explain some of that. These are just some of the concepts and objectives. They're really some of the things that we do as, as music educators, particularly in the general music class. This is what we try to do in a sequential way from the time the students are in kindergarten. If any of you have ever observed a kindergarten class in action, you will understand that, you'll understand why the kindergarten class tends to focus perhaps a little bit more on movement activities than it does on some of the other, other activities that we do that might require a little bit more sitting quietly in one's place. But nonetheless, that whole concept of musical expression that heads that list, what we're trying to do is provide a way that students are comfortable expressing themselves musically, whether it's rhythmically, melodically, through movement. There are all kinds of ways that every student can, can, can experience musical expression. We are, as a general music curriculum, we are a performing curriculum. If you go into a general music class here, you will find it all grade levels, that the students are performing in one way or another. They're either moving, or they're singing. They're learning about classroom instruments, very often classroom percussion. And then we do, of course, some of the more traditional, particularly as the students get, get more advanced, music listening, music literacy, history, et cetera.
And I would say here too, Mr. Norman, that the, the general music program really supports the performing music program in that you would maybe be surprised, or maybe not be surprised, to know that the general music class, students are beginning to learn basic theory. They're beginning to do, you know, counting in terms of whole note, half note, quarter note, and they really are building those building blocks that then translate over into the performing side as they get older.
Just to kind of, thank you, Andy, and just to kind of piggyback on that, my teaching role in the district is high school band, so it will not surprise you that I have a selfish interest in seeing the instrumental students, particularly the band instrumental students, continue through the program, learning some of those basics in theory. Music literacy, by the way, refers specifically to reading music notation, and all of those, all of those things are essential, which is why we think of the importance of the elementary program is it's the intro, it's the introduction to our music education program. We want to see the students continue because that's, as we're getting into increasingly complex and typically rewarding pieces of music in our ensembles as they progress through the grades. That's really what we're all about, so that we want to have all of those students standing up at Spectrum at the high school at the end of the year in front of, in front of the audience in the gym. And this is more of, more specific activities. We do get into, into composition very early on. There are lots of different ways to teach, to teach music composition, even to very young children, obviously performing music, recording music. Contemporary media has become increasingly important, again, during the, during the pandemic particularly, we relied very heavily on, on instructional technology and music, and we've continued to do that because some of those programs are really quite sophisticated, and they not only allow us to survive as a program during some very challenging times, but they also have some, as I said, some very sophisticated ways of delivering instruction and in ways that students are able to actually undertake learning without having, having a teacher or any other kind of guide directly, directly involved in the process. And any of you who understand how a lot of instructional technology, technology works, and I think that's probably most of us now, know what I'm talking about. And we do have students conduct. Some of you who have been to some of our elementary concerts may have seen, particularly at the end of the year, a student conductor in front of the band. It's not, it's, it's, it's something that some of our teachers engage in pretty readily, and it's a great way for students to exercise some leadership and independence and learn what it's like on the other side of the box, so to speak. Special Events is probably not, it's probably not a great title for this slide, but these are really events. This is what we do. We have regular concert performances throughout the school year. The elementary performing year, there's typically concert, or there'll be concerts in the January to February timeframe, and then at the end of the year in the May to June timeframe. And we have, with last year, we basically restored that cycle again. For a lot of the students who are currently, who are currently in school, they went through some, some times where these, these events were not available to them, and we are finally, with, with our 2022, 23 school year, we restored in full all of the events which we had done previously, I am happy to say, including our annual district festival, which last year was a choral festival. You're looking at a shot of last year's choral festival in Jim B. at the high school. There are some events which regardless of what we do in, in great renovation projects of any of our auditorium spaces, there are some events that require the biggest space we have in the district, and our, our district festival thankfully is one of those events because of the number of students who participate. This year's festival will be the orchestra festival in March, and we do have a guest clinician coming in from Ithaca College, and we're looking forward to that event. NISBA solo and ensemble evaluation, we do have elementary students who participate in doing NISBA solos. It is available to anybody in grades, grade one and up. So we do have some very young students who participate. NISBA is not, is not a requirement, but it is encouraged for students who want to get, who want to get evaluated and adjudicated in perhaps a more advanced way from what the opportunities that might be available to them in their regular instruction. As I, I noted in the district festival, presentations by noted clinicians and guest artists, as in our guest artists this year. We also have had works commissioned and presented in district festivals. If you have ever been to a district festival and you looked at the history page of the district festival, some very distinguished composers are represented on that page, and some, some pieces commissioned by Bethlehem School District that have gone on to be published, and, and many of which are in publication now and are currently performed. Some of them we perform ourselves. So we, we try to provide as much of what a, a strong, comprehensive music education program can do as is possible, and we begin that in the elementary. Cooperative activities with other school districts, we have not done any, again, since prior to the pandemic, but we do have, based on teacher initiative, we have many colleagues throughout, throughout the suburban council and other school districts, and we do have, we do have teachers who cooperate in activities, exchange events, and so forth with other school districts, also with, with other, with other extracurricular opportunities. This is just, I, I would think, a general statement, reinforcement of what I've been talking about previously. It's really important to us to meet the needs and expectations of our diverse BC community, and that's where that question of accessibility comes back. We want every student to feel welcome, and we want every student to feel a, an important part of our program because that's essential. We don't exist without kids, and we, that begins with our elective program here at the elementary. That's just, that's the basis through which we hope that we can continue. It won't surprise you to know that I think we have a dedicated, knowledgeable, and creative staff. We also have a very, very important support organization in the Bethlehem Music Association. They not only provide us with financial support, but they also provide us with, with a lot of moral support and a lot of assistance in hospitality at some of our events. Their presence at these events is essential. They underwrite the honorarium for our, our district festival. They provide registration fees for our students who are attending suburban council and NISBA honor events. The, those, those registration fees are paid by the Bethlehem Music Association. They have also provided us with some very important pieces of musical equipment, including a piano in this building. They have, they took at the beginning, the, the last, my last report to you, which was about five years ago, they were beginning an initiative to provide a, a viable performance piano in each elementary school in the district, and with their help and support, I'm happy to report that, that, that process is almost complete. And of course, as you all know, we not only have fine musical organizations here in the capital region, but we also are easily accessible to many fine musical centers in New York, Boston. Of course, we have SPAC in Tanglewood and a number of great events nearby. This is a, this is a great place to live for exposure to music. This is our elementary ensemble enrollment as of about a week ago, and I, just to give you a little explanation, that, so our bands between the five elementary buildings right now total 135. That averages out, as you can see, to about 27, 27 per building in the band. Now, that is not necessarily a... Now, that is not necessarily a balanced instrumentation, and I, this is why I want to come back a little bit to what I was talking about before. When we are prepping especially a band program, we're not just dealing with that number of 27 kids standing in front of us. If we're going to have a viable band program, we need to make sure that we've guided those students. We want to give students the opportunity to play what they want to play, but if you're going to have a band, as most of you know, you need everything from the piccolo down to the tuba. So we, we try to, to provide some guidance so that we have a balanced instrumentation. That number is getting back to close to where it was in, before the pandemic. My, the last available number I have for that, last time I reported to you in 2018, we were at 157 as compared to 135. The orchestra, which remember is grades four and five, we're at 269. That's a very healthy number, averaging out at 54 per building, and that was, that's, that's getting much closer. We were at 301 in 2018. So we're getting, we're getting very close to our pre-pandemic numbers in the elementary enrollment. Of course, this is an estimate. This is the total enrollment that I could, that I could get from Aspen. Chorus is effect, effectively involves every fourth and fifth grader in the district is involved in chorus. So that number is, that, that's the number, Dave Hurst could correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I got a, a count of 619 fourth and fifth graders in the district altogether, which means that it's not impossible to have a chorus that would, that would total 619. The reason I say it's not applicable as far as the average per building because honestly it depends on how many fourth and fifth grade sections you have. That number's not driven by anything other than what the enrollment is in the building.
I also wonder too if the numbers relative to enrollment at that time, what they would look like, but again, we don't have that data, but just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, and I also want to emphasize what-
Relative to total student enrollment.
Indeed, and I'm not suggesting that the, that the pandemic or any single factor is responsible for where we have attrition in a program. I'm simply identifying for you the kinds of things we look at as a music education program as we're looking ahead into the secondary level as well. So these numbers are healthy, and we hope that we'll, we'll see all of these students, as I said, we hope we'll see all of these students who are participating in these events now, that they'll all be standing at the front of Jim B. in Spectrum when they're We're undertaking a program review. Every five years, we, we do a program review. This is where the, the staff and I get together and we put together a whole range of considerations. Our curriculum revision seems to always be an ongoing, an ongoing task for us to, to make sure that we're aligned with the standards. Of course, we made several, several course corrections and adjustments during the pandemic, and as I said, some of which we continue to use and are, will, are represented in our current curriculum and will also be represented in that program review. Instrumental music staffing. Here's where I want to come back to what I said a little bit earlier about accessibility. One of the challenges for the instrumental music staffing is your children are increasingly busy, and you are increasingly busy, and we have parents who are increasingly busy. Our instrumental ensembles meet before school in the, here in the elementary buildings, and we often receive concerns, I can't get my child to school, I have to be at work too early. We get, we get concerns regarding the expense of instruments. One of our positions as a district and as a music program is that we will not let money considerations stand in the way of a student participating in our program. We don't always know where those, where, where those considerations exist, but the, the question of, there, there is an expense to instrumental music, particularly if you're playing one of the smaller instruments. We don't keep a full stable of instruments here that we can make available for use. Most of the instruments that we have in our inventory for the elementary students are those instruments that are simply too, too big to take back and forth. And what happens, of course, is that the parents bring the students on the day that they have band or orchestra, they have to drop them off, and then they have to, they have to consider picking them up at the end of the day. This is not something new. This is the way the program has run for decades, really, but we are increasingly hearing concerns about the constraints of time, the constraints of early employment. We have, I have a number of colleagues here in, in the district who are personally affected right now, who have students who participate in elementary band, but they have responsibilities in other places in the district before, before the, the elementary day starts. I don't have an easy answer for this. There are, there are several answers, and none of them, none of them are easy, and none of them are, are cheap for that matter. They, they all involve questions of expense and questions of how we deal with transportation, how we deal with supervision of students before school. I know that Jody and I have had conversations about this. Dave and I have had conversations, we, I've had conversations with the staff, but we just know that if we can't get the students in our program to begin with, it's going to be that much more difficult for us to be able to retain them into the secondary level. So I just, I, I just let you know, this is, this is not something where you can come up with an answer, but it is something which will be represented in the program review. We have, we have some things that we consider and some things that we, that, that we discuss, and I'd be remiss if I did not bring that up. Our general music scheduling for, for, for many years, my general music staff at the elementary level have said they wish that we could have more frequent contact with the students at the elementary level. We have one day a week. Now, there, again, that's, there's, there's not an easy answer to that. You can't just say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna set up another class for you to teach. Particularly at the, the third grade level and below, we feel that it would be especially beneficial if we were able to meet those students more frequently than one day a week. This is not something new. I reported to you on, on this, this consideration last time, last, last time we, we met. Equipment acquisition, as I said, we're, we're nearing the end of our, our piano depreciation and maintenance project. Classroom instrumentation is on an as-needed basis. We, just before I last reported to you, thanks to, thanks, thanks to a great extent to Ms. Daly, who happens to be here this evening, we acquired and went full bore on, in our ukulele education program, which I would have to say is a smashing success. And for those of you who come to our faculty recital on, on October 23rd in the high school auditorium at seven o'clock, you'll have the opportunity to see that even adults can learn how to play ukulele. Instructional technology, I think I've already, already touched on, and its importance in our program. There's our, our faculty, a list. Many of you know, and many if not all of these folks, and again, you can see laid out more or less what the areas of specialization are, and it, you can kind of tell what somebody first did for some of us several decades ago when we first got into our interest in music. And just to restate the obvious, this is a great, an unusually fine community for music education considering its size, and we appreciate your attention and continued support, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Well, thank you for coming to talk to us this evening, and I appreciate that you put in a plug for the music faculty recital that's coming up at the end of the month. I definitely encourage everybody to attend if you can, because it's, the ones I've been to before were pretty terrific. And I just wanted to just recognize, I mean, I know that COVID, I think, was exceptionally hard on our music staff and students across the district, and I'm really happy to see that there are, you know, things seem to be recovering and that there are so many elementary students in particular that are participating in our programs, because I think that, you know, as these students, especially as they get older, music sometimes is what gets them to walk in the door. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Questions? Willow?
I know the presentation was K5. I'm curious if you happen to know, and if you don't, that's okay, sort of approximately what percentage of those fourth and fifth grade students go on in the middle school to also sing in the chorus or play in the band or orchestra?
I could, I could easily get that number for you. I would simply consult-
Okay.
Aspen. We do have, for, again, for many reasons, there are, the, the transition from fifth grade to sixth grade, that's a, that's a big attrition point for us, and there are, there are lots of reasons for that, and many or all of those reasons are legitimate reasons. It, that's where, that's where it starts to involve a choice for, for our students. I think, again, Ms. Daly could, could correct me, but my sense is that the numbers at the, at the middle school this year are really quite strong in each grade level. Remember, we have three choir, six, seven, and eight, and Katie, I think you've indicated that they're at about 100 per grade level, which means that, and that's actually a pretty good number, and what's especially encouraging about that is it's 100 per grade level, so those students are tending, are tending to stay with it.
Great.
So it's a little bit of a bigger challenge, again, because of instrumentation needs, but I could certainly get that, I could certainly get those numbers for you.
Thank you. Meredith?
You mentioned earlier that we, as a program, try to help families if affording an instrument is, is a problem. What should a, a family do if they'd like to enroll their fourth grader, fifth grader in a musical instrument, but they're concerned about the price?
The first person that they should consult with is the instrumental music teacher, and they, they deal with this all the time. And just going back to that, that slide, you can see who the instrumental music teachers are at the elementary. They are constantly dealing and fielding these kinds of questions. Many of them never reach, reach my phone or my computer screen because they can usually, they, they can work it out, but that's always the first, first line. If they don't get the answer, that, they'll get the best answer that the music teacher can provide them. If there's a way of providing them with an instrument and they don't otherwise have the wherewithal, we will find a way to do it. We have, we have some instruments on our inventory that we have available for, for those kinds of needs. We have a maintenance fee, which the board authorized many years ago, which goes towards maintaining our fleet of instruments. We very often waive that fee, which, but the, the typical line of, the typical food chain for that kind of thing would be the teacher, me, and if I can't find an answer, and between the teacher and me, we can usually find an answer.
Right, and I also would encourage that our music staff, you know, speak to individuals at the building level as well, either the building principal or the school nurse, to identify families that may be in need, and we can explore options to assist them, you know, as needed.
Again, Andy, thank you for, for, for that comment. So just to piggyback on Andy's comment, there is in fact a process which we've used for many years, and you're all aware of it, the, the process for identifying families that have specific needs based on criteria set up by the district. It's the families that, where we never hear the inquiry that are often the problem, because we have a lot of situations where we'll, we'll have folks that are in a notch, that don't qualify under those criteria, but, but they're not going to find it possible to participate. So those are the ones that, those, those are the, those are the situations that we don't know about it, we really can't do anything about it, and it's very sad for us to think that we would lose any student because of not being able to afford to participate.
One quick question. Do we ever have students that pick up an instrument for the first time in, say, middle school? So for example, say, somebody doesn't sign up in fourth or fifth grade, is it too late when they get to sixth grade or seventh grade?
We never close the door. The main difficulty with students beginning in, well, any grade level other than, than the starting year, which would be fifth grade for band, fourth grade for, for strings, is they will tend to have to play catch-up, but it's not impossible, and we have folks, as time permits, who are willing to work, who are willing to work with that student. We've had students, I, I happen to know of, of a student who had been in the orchestra program in middle school, went through ninth, 10th, and 11th grade at the high school, and in senior year went to see Dave Beck and said, you know, I used to play violin, I'd really love to do it again, and Dave said, okay, and said, and sat him down and put him on the lesson schedule, and yeah, it's really just a question of, it's more, it's more for the student's benefit because when you, when you get behind, it, it becomes more difficult. Most, not just, not just students, have, the, the motivation to practice is really based on that school, that, that, that school activity, the band, the chorus or the orchestra. There are students who want to be fine soloists. We have them here as, as, as many in this district as there, as there could be in any other district, but it's, it's primarily that, there's a, there's a social component, but there's also that being able to, to keep up. Students can get discouraged if they can't, if they can't catch up. But to answer your question, yes, we have students who can, who start later.
Bob, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks so much for your presentation. Just a, just a quick follow-up question. You had identified fifth to sixth grade as a big attrition sort of point, and again, I don't want to put you on the spot, I know this wasn't part of the presentation, but what about the, like, the, the transition from middle school to high school? Is that another sort of point where you lose folks?
Yeah, those are the two big-
Okay.
Those are the two big transition points, elementary to middle school, middle school to high school. We have because of the way the system is set up. Usually if a student has, middle school years are tough. They're tough, they're tough anyway for, for kids, and there's, there's a lot of stuff that happens in middle school. Usually if, if they're still playing at the end of eighth grade, they're probably going to be in our ensembles at ninth grade, unless there's, we do have schedule constraints, but again, those are, those are beyond the scope of this discussion. Those are big, those are big questions, and the students do have to make choices, but usually if a student has invested that kind of time, particularly in instrumental music, and because we have a very close connection and recommendation process from the middle school to the high school, it, they, that is a transition point, something of an attrition point, but not as much as, not as much as fifth to sixth grade.
Thank you.
And on this point, Dave, I would just add, as a former middle school teacher, parent of two children who went through the music program, proud French horn, senior year, my other one dropped saxophone in ninth grade, sorry about that. And as, and as an elementary principal now, I think that I see the value in students staying with their instruments, and as a former middle school teacher, I would say that there are a lot of legitimate conflicts that arise with families, but also there's, there are a lot of perceived conflicts and issues that I would encourage people to really think through carefully the choices they make, because while it oftentimes may seem a perceived choice that it will be easier to drop an instrument, that's not necessarily the case, and that we would have students who would be unfortunately not in the program any longer, and I could tell you firsthand, my kids both enjoyed the program, I mean, learning an instrument's hard early on, the challenges of that, but as they get older, it becomes a much, it becomes an enjoyable experience with regard to the social aspect. So- So I would just put a, kind of a plug in from that, from my multiple perspectives as a parent and former middle school teacher.
There, there is a perception that we tell students, you must practice so many, so many minutes per day, so many hours per week. We obviously try to instill good practice habits, but if we only had in our ensembles students who always meet and exceed those practice, those, those practice expectations or frankly even came close, first of all, I wouldn't be standing here because my high school band director would have kicked me out of band and, because I was a, I was a pretty indifferent practicer and I, we'd be standing in front of empty ensemble rooms. So yes, we want to emphasize that. Of course, the, the time spent at home, we try to emphasize smart practice habits. You don't, we realize if you only have five minutes, do this. Don't, and so, and if you, if you can't even find those five minutes, we're still going to let you be in the program and we're glad to have you and it, we all, we, we put it together.
Willow, did you have another question?
I'm sorry, I have a board member at home asking if the schools accept donations of instruments.
Yes.
When their kids age out.
Yes, we have, we, we often get folks who call and they'll say, I've got a violin, I've got a trumpet, yes, we'll take it. We give you a letter that says, thank you, and yes.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Be.
Any other questions?
Can be.
I think that's, no, no more questions. Thank you again for coming and taking the time to talk to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who'd like to address the board on an agenda item, now is the time
Hey, good eve, good evening. Couple of quick questions.
If you could, if you could just state your name for us, especially for people.
My name's Arjuna Hojalar. Question is, what happens if the vote fails? The upcoming vote?
On the Capitol project?
Yeah.
If the, the vote doesn't pass by the residents of, of the district, the middle school auditorium project just will not move forward.
At this time and this way.
Yeah, okay. And in secondary, like I know that BMA like does a lot of fundraising for pianos for the schools. I guess the question is, why aren't we as a district providing pianos, well, better pianos for like the auditoriums?
I think we have good pianos for the auditorium. The question is, how pianos for the auditoriums?
Yeah, because I think it's one of the initiatives behind the BMA, like supply better pianos for the.
I don't know if that's an issue.
I don't know a specific answer. I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, Dave. I don't know if you have.
So pianos are of course expensive and so as the, as our fee of piano is aged out, we try to replace those pianos that the BMA is helping fund. And I should also, I should also emphasize that that money does become solely from the BMA. We also have, we also have a handful of equipment, equipment allocation directed from the district. So it's a, it's a cooperative effort. But typically, the kind of the piano we're talking about typically are the Essex piano we put in this, this building. We spend about sixty-five hundreds, now over eight thousand dollars, not connections, a truck that, that helps all of the ground. So it's just a question of, of the piano, of the investment because a lot of students will use it. But it's, we certainly want, we certainly expect those pianos could be used, those, those signature piano could be used in the elementary building. A lot of it's just because that's a special item. As Jody and I discussed, we have something that you pulled out of her view of the district budget and the BMA, I always have the provided going to her at the beginning of budget season saying, how about I have those pianos?
I could be misremembering. I feel like at one of the presentations with the architect, that was one of the pieces of the auditorium renovation was making room for the nicer piano to fit into that space.
That's correct. There was a, a lot of input from stakeholders to take out the slope of the, of the floor, rearrange the seating for various types of, there's a very fantastic, for lack of a better word, baby grand piano that can, can be moved in as well as the upright piano. So that was part of the design.
Do you want me to speak to that as well, as part of that discussion?
Sure.
So yes, there is a grand piano.
Maybe at the microphone though, Dave.
So Katie and I have talked about this quite a bit and when we were planning for this project, we talked about, wouldn't it be nice if we could put the old grand piano, which is actually a fine instrument, it's from, it's actually from between the wars, but with some, with some renovation, which would be expensive. That piano could be once again a fine piano. And at one point, we thought, wouldn't it be great if we could put that piano? Because we replaced that, thanks to the BMA, with a Steinway B piano, which is also a real flagship instrument. When we were discussing the design of the auditorium and the constraints, we, we reached the point where we realized that in order to make space to put a grand piano in, in a spot where it would be accessible to our pit and also so that I as the pianist, for example, or anybody else could actually see Katie when she's conducting, if I were accompanying, it would, we'd have to lose, we'd have to lose a lot of seats or when we had the piano in place, we'd have to take a lot of seats out. And we finally decided, because of the availability of, for example, the Essex piano and the Boston upright that's at, that's at the middle school is a pretty decent instrument. It needs, it needs some work. We acquired that about the same, also from the BMA about the same time we acquired the, the Steinway grand we have at the high school. It, it simply was a question of making a choice and, and trying to decide, how often are we going to use this instrument? Could we not get just as good a result if we had a flat floor under a good vertical piano, which is what this project will accomplish? It's just a grand, it's seven feet long and it's five feet wide and it takes up, it would, it would have put that part of the project so far back in the house of the auditorium that we simply felt that it was, that we had to be able to move on with the project and, and that's, that's kind of that. Arjuna, you can ask Katie if I just told you everything, but I think I did.
Thank you. Next, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through four.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Any opposed? That carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through five.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through ten.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through four.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries? Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors who'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. On October 17th, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, we have the 2023 Capitol Bond Project vote at the high school. On October 18th is our next regularly scheduled board meeting. That's going to be at Glenmont Elementary School, anticipating executive session starting at six and reconvening to open session at seven. And then the meeting following that is on November 1st and that's at Elsmere Elementary School, again, anticipating executive session at six and reconvening, open meeting at seven. Seeing no need to go into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.